Meeting to order, all members are present. If you could please stand and say a pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Lynn.
Second.
Second by Kara, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Agenda is approved. Any visitors that have comments or questions or requests? No visitors. Okay, one item too, just for those who are watching. We are under repair for the livestream, so hopefully by the next session, we'll be livestreaming again, but at this point, we are gonna be like a day late, so the, this meeting will be posted on YouTube tomorrow. So hopefully, we'll be up and running next meeting. Consent items. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda or is there anything that people want to pull?
Motion to approve.
I'd like to pull the State High School League bill and just talk about that a little bit.
Okay. Anything else? We'll pull the letter F then. Is there a motion to approve with the letter F?
Motion to approve. I'm amended.
Okay, motion by Lynn.
Second.
Second by Kara, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Consent agenda is approved. So letter F. Sunny.
I just want to make sure I understand that, so what, what we would be approving today is not everything that we are being charged at the moment. But we are, what we would be approving is paying for all of what?
What would be approving tonight would be the $1 per student, the fees for each activity that we're in, and the annual membership fee.
So fees for each activity that we're in, of which some we are not playing at the moment? So it's for the entire school year?
It is. Those, those two sports are scheduled to be in the spring as of now.
Right, but so, remind me again, last year we paid for every sport and we didn't have any spring sports and we were just out that?
We were.
And so if we do that again now and we don't know what's happening with our sports, we're just gonna be out $5,353? That's a question.
Yeah, that's the risk.
For, for an organization that right now is not really doing anything for us and we're questioning some of the processes that they're following? That, that seems like not a smart risk in my mind.
I mean, what are our options? It's, I, I don't think we...
They're not gonna kick us out. I mean, they, they need us all as members. I mean, I think this, the point Sunny's trying to make is that, you know, we weren't, we weren't aware of these increases. We were not told, they happened by magic to some degree. We, we uncovered it. They didn't pay us back for last spring, didn't even offer to do that. And on top of that now, they are coming out with another fairly large increase that they want to help us pay as members to hold them up. So I think, you know, to be fair to the taxpayers and people out there, I mean, we're, we're not getting the benefits from them right now. Just like I said last time, it doesn't mean we don't want to prop them up and help them, but it just seemed like they went about it in a way that was, you know, lack of a better term, sneaky. And all of a sudden, they come out with this next one. So I think, if we agree, you know, and again, I don't know that I can, you know, I think y'all know how I feel. I, I don't think it was fair to pay their increase from last year along with this dollar a kid, which was a 57% increase, which still seemed unreasonable, but maybe acceptable. But to even think about paying a eight, $9,000, isn't it?
Nine thousand.
A $9,000 fee without even knowing where we're going with this, because right now, if things don't change, everybody needs to understand, there's gonna be club basketball, club hockey. The kids that are participating have to pay other things to participate in things because the high school league's not gonna have these activities. So, I, you know, I would agree with Brad. There's no possible way we can pay this additional fee, but I think everybody needs to understand what Sunny's trying to say is, we had issues with our city charging us money we didn't want to pay. We've had issues with other people charging us money and we certainly should be asking these questions.
So Brad, do we have any? So we, we feel like these, you know, I'm just saying theoretically, we feel like these fees are a little bit unfair. I think it probably has more to do than with the dollar amount, but maybe the process in which we got into it?
Yeah, you know, the, the information I sent essentially that the Minnesota State High School League would have been appropriate for you to see two months ago.
Right. So that, I guess that's why I feel like, I feel like we, there's concern about the way the Minnesota State High School League is operating. And if, if everybody just pays these fees without some of that being resolved, what, what motivation do they have to resolve anything? Because they're still getting the money that they're requesting and, I, I don't know, I just, I don't tend to pay for things that haven't produced something in my personal life and it seems like we shouldn't be using taxpayers' dollars to do that either.
Again, I'll have to say that, you know, I, I did and I am recommending that we table the $9,000 fee. I, I agree with you, Sunny and Shannon. I don't think we should pay that yet because there's still some questions to be unanswered. But we are currently in activities. There are plans for activities to continue through the winter and through the spring. And so I do believe that that, that payment, although it is more than what we wanted to do, is appropriate to pay at this time. But I, I still have further questions about the $9,000.
So I guess to be clear, you're okay with the increase from this spring? Was technically this spring and we didn't know about it until we investigated a little bit?
Yeah, again, that information that I shared I feel should have been done two months ago. No doubt about it.
Well, but you didn't know what the amount was either. I mean, again, and that's part of the process that Sunny's talking about that I think, you know, the high school league right now is, is coming under fire and it's not just us, our, you know, us at this board meeting. It's all over the state. These same questions are being asked. So, again, I guess, you know, we'll probably listen to your recommendation, but I think it, it has to be understood and again, the pressure from the internal mechanisms on the high school league has to be a little more stringent to make sure that these increases don't just all of a sudden show up. And, and I think that's the part that I think, again, boards around the state have felt was unfair because it, it kind of went unchecked.
Sounds like they had a process that's no different than when we have financial problems because they put a committee together that recommended this and they had superintendents and athletic directors and people that were part of that committee that did it. It's just, they didn't tell us about it.
Um, I don't know that that's true.
Well, that was part of the letter.
Yeah, I, I don't know how, the second fee. The first one, probably. But again, they've had, they didn't have a rep, if you really want to get into it, they didn't have a rep assembly meeting in 2019 or 2020. So they skipped that. So there is some serious...
Because of the COVID?
Yes.
It was supposed to be in the spring.
It was supposed to be in the spring, right. So I mean, not to get too far in the weeds on that, but it's supposed to work that way, Lynn. But I think, again, we've all understand the challenges of COVID, so it's possible that they didn't follow their own processes. But at the very least, there is no question that the communication was very vague in what it was gonna be and when it was gonna happen. And I think it was hard to stomach the first one, but, you know, I think everybody understands the challenges. But to throw this one on here in August makes the first one feel as bad, you know, as the second one because now you're going, well, what, you know, what is the process here? And, you know, and again, they are nonprofit organization that we as members fund and understood. They can come to us when they need help. But like Sunny said, we're not sure where this is going. And, and, you know, I mean, the, the high school athletics is gonna be a very difficult proposition in the next year and so you're gonna see more and more kids maybe not participating. So where is it gonna go? And I think this fee is, you know, some leverage by not paying is getting everybody to the table as a member to say, what, what are we doing? So if we just make it blindly...
I guess you might want to look at it long-term. Is this an organization that we want to have out there when we get through all of the COVID and when we get back to whatever kind of normal it's gonna be? Do we want to have a state high school league or does it not serve a purpose that we, we need to have in there?
For sure, we, I don't think anybody wants to blow up the institution. So certainly, I think we'd all say that the high school league serves a purpose. But when you're, again, a nonprofit organization that relies on membership as your organizational, you know, guidance, you do have the right as a member to question how that's being done. So fixing things and making things better is the goal, not, not destroying them.
Right.
And by saying pause, let's look at this and find out, is there something we can do from a financial standpoint on their side? Because we're putting the burden back on our, our parents and our taxpayers all around the state to cover that burden. And so I think it's not about burning it down. It's about how do we as members pause and ask questions? And again, to not get into the weeds too far, I mean, there are a lot of those questions are, are being worked out.
Sounds like it did serve a purpose, but what purpose is it really serving right now?
Well, the question is, do you want it to exist when we get through this so that we can have state tournaments and so we can have a system that allows the teams to compete fairly? And sometimes you gotta prop up organizations in order to get through crises and, I don't know.
And I, and I agree with you Lynn, I think you're right. We do have to support each other. But I guess my concern is that there are issues with the way right now this organization is running. And so that's why I feel like now is the time to say, hold on, we don't want, we don't want to destroy you, but we, we want, we want there to be better processes in place so that in future situations, at any time in the future you need to raise fees, you come and talk to your members, be more transparent. You know, I, I just think that the whole procedure that they went through was not the best way to be treating their members, yet they expect this money to come in. And I'm not saying that I don't think we should ever pay it. I just am questioning if now is the right time to pay it.
And I would agree. I think if, if it was an option to pay as you go, you know, like for the activities that are happening, you know, there's unequivocally no reason why we shouldn't pay for that. But I don't know if that's an option and if it has to be a one-size-fits-all, so.
Well, that's what I'm wondering. Is there a discretionary way we can pay for what we believe is owed to that organization based on the sports that are in play or activities, let's say, that are in play now, that are active? I mean, we could write the check for whatever amount we want.
And I would guess we could figure that out because there's a fee per, per sport, right? So you figure out the sports that are active, you pay that part of the fee. And then the $1 per...
So you do a third of this, third per?
With the caveat that when the fall sports or activities that were canceled or reinstated, then we'll pay the fee once they're reinstated. There's, there's no leverage here.
Well, we can still, we can still bring this back on the 28th because the payment's not technically due till October 1st. So we can still bring it on the 28th. We would know more on the 28th on what's happening. And we can send the check off on the 29th.
Which payment are you talking about?
The first one.
The first one.
And I'd argue that potentially we even short pay for this, for all the spring sports that we were never reimbursed for. I mean, if, if we're gonna play fair...
Except there were a lot of organizations last spring that had to cancel events and still were paying staff that were either furloughed because they didn't know how long it was going to happen. And of course, they had state tournaments that were canceled. Like, okay, we're in the middle of a state tournament and they canceled the next day of it. So there was, they, they couldn't react fast enough to cut their costs.
Yeah, I mean, that's fair. I, I understand that, that they couldn't react fast enough in that situation since it's a prepaid situation. I'm just retroactively looking back.
And they did say they did get one of the payroll protection...
Yeah, and that's my next question. So did they receive any CARES Act funding, payroll protection funding? Any governmental funding as a nonprofit?
I don't believe they could.
Because that should be published somewhere. We should know how much money they got. So I think this probably should come back at the next board meeting with a more specific recommendation. I think what we're trying to accomplish as a board is maintain, like basically, I mean, a thousand, couple thousand dollars isn't breaking our bank. Uh, it's not gonna break the Minnesota State High School League's bank. That's not the point. The point is, um, we don't feel great about how, you know, how decisions are being made, how they're balancing their budget. So I think we need a specific recommendation that maintains our leverage and sends a message because this is probably the only way we can send a message to the State High School League. And then... It's partially principle, but it is partially expectations. We have expectations of them as an organization that they're being transparent and they expect us to pay money. And so we both need to hold up our end of the deal on that.
Lastly, Brad, I would just say that the CARES Act money, in my opinion, should not be used for this. And again, I know you mentioned that. I just, I don't, I don't know that that makes sense to me. I mean, we, we've got lots of other challenges that we would need to use that, that money for. So I, I don't know if you want to elaborate on that, but I think that's something...
No, it was, it was just a group of superintendents just talking about that potentially there's some membership opportunities and, uh, to pay some fees with. And, and there's supposed some discussion about whether or not we could use some of those CARES Act or county dollars to, to pay for these, these, that $9,000 fee. And, uh, you know, if we don't want to do that or if it's not something that we feel comfortable with, then it's, it's general fund expense.
So we have consensus. It sounds like to table this and then bring it back for discussion at the next meeting.
For action. Well, it won't be in the consent, it'll be in action then.
Okay, very good.
And when you do that, can you include like, um, I mean, we're talking about some leverage here, but I'd like to understand what the potential consequences to us of not paying that? Like if we don't pay it or we short pay it or whatever, what, what are the, sort of the short list of things that they could do?
Yeah.
So we can understand the impact.
Yeah, the short answer to that is that we are no longer available, are allowed to play in a state tournament, if there is a tournament, because we're not members.
Okay.
The only, again, that's a good point to make up. You know, everybody understands is, the only facility is state tournaments. I mean, the conference play and the district play and the, every game play, you know, 90, 85% of the kids don't participate in the state tournament. So, you know, again, I, I think the risk is, you know, low in some cases.
Okay, just curious.
On to action items, Lynn. Resolution to accept the donation. Looks like, uh, we received a donation from Murphy Granite for the engraving of a football legacy stone for $150. Is there a motion to approve the...
Motion to approve.
Motion by Jennifer.
Second.
Second by Lynn. Any further discussion? Roll call board.
Aye.
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 Aye. A resolution to accept the donation is approved. Okay. Item B, out-of-state travel for Recore students.
Again, this just comes back as action. And we talked, we discussed it. I'm still recommending that we do not do out-of-state travel for students on trips, specifically those large trips that we've talked about before, the Costa Rica, Washington DC. I've done my checking with all of those group leaders and they all have it in line for either going on to the next year or refunds or those types of things. And then I also would, um, have talked to our staff or, I'm sorry, our admin team, I believe, about that we ourselves would not do any outside, outside travel. So any conventions or those types of things would not, would not be a part of our agenda for this year.
When you say outside travel, do you mean Recore-sponsored employee outside travel?
Correct. So like, the superintendent would not go to, let's say, Orlando for the National Superintendent Conference.
Okay.
That would be now approved for this year.
Any further discussion? There are a motion to approve the recommendation. Motion by Sunny to approve the limiting out-of-state, out-of-state travel for the Recore business.
Second.
Second by Jennifer. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed. Recommendation is approved. Insurance renewal.
Uh, church renewal. I recommend that we accept the insurance renewals as presented. As I said, there is a increase in our property and cyber insurance and we have a decrease in our workers comp. So overall, that is good for our district for this, for this upcoming year. Beth, do you have anything else you wanted to add?
Uh, nope, that was it. It's pretty straightforward.
Is there any differences between like coverage, coverages from last time to this time?
No, he, my insurance agent has to develop some changes in deductibles and it's not worth it for the price savings. So everything's the same coverage as last year.
Okay. Just make sure that increase the price and exclude coverage.
Motion to approve. Motion by Lynn, any further discussion? Second, I'll second. Motion by Lynn, second by Jason. Insurance renewals. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, opposed. Motion on insurance renewal passes. Apple, item D, Apple lease for student MacBooks.
So tonight you see on the agenda a lease agreement for the purchase of our student MacBooks, which will help us move up our timeline and our students getting their devices, which was a wish by you as a board and a desire by us as a team. And with our CARES Act dollars, we can make that happen. So I would recommend to you that we approve the lease and be able to push the order button tomorrow, as early as tomorrow, in getting those MacBook Airs here for our students.
I'd like a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Sunny, second by Lynn. Any further discussion, Kara?
Yeah, so when we discussed, you know, fast-tracking our one-to-one and, you know, our previously planned one-to-one initiative, some of the concerns are, were related to infrastructure, in-house infrastructure as well as ability to effectively roll out training, platform use. You know, cost was kind of presented as, and I'm, this is great, but cost was not like the number one concern that I heard. So I'm just curious how those concerns have been addressed.
I have, I do have Brian here to, to help me answering questions, but I'll start and Brian, you can, you can fill in, okay? So, um, we, first of all, the dollars that are given to us through CARES and through the county have to be spent by December 31st. And so we really don't have an option to do the training we wanted to do this year because we have to spend the money prior to that. Brian has secured the infrastructure pieces. I think I signed something today because one of the pieces is over $5,000 that we have to do. So we have those things coming to get our infrastructure ready. And, uh, so that, that, so those hurdles have been overcome. It's definitely gonna be a hurdle to get our staff trained for, you know, using the new device and getting, well, you know, our students probably won't have as much of a hurdle, but we're just, it was just absolutely worth it to do it because we had to spend the money before December 31st.
The other thing too is because the money is available and the money is dictating the timetable now, you know, we didn't have the option to spend this year getting ready so that we could really roll it out well the way we wanted to next year. And so because the money says, no, you've got to buy it now, part of it is an adjustment and expectations. You know, when we were talking about it a couple months ago, we were talking about dating a significant financial deficit. That was one of the concerns, we're gonna dig ourselves a significant financial hole to follow a lot of net gain, per se, in the classroom. And we didn't know what the beginning of the year was gonna look like. We may have all of a sudden, if you're going to school tomorrow. We didn't know. Now, the money is available now that our timetable is such. So we need to execute now, spend the money now. We're doing that now. In terms of product lead time, we're not expecting to get these in two to three weeks and start handing them out. We're talking probably December. Um, so this isn't like something that's gonna happen in a month. Um, as far as the RFI piece is going, part of that CARES Act money is going to cover that. We're gonna do that district-wide even though we're only talking about laying out the MacBook Air right now. Um, so that'll at least be done. I know one of the concerns we had last time is if we did that now, we wouldn't be able to capitalize on E-rate dollars. Uh, the benefit from getting these CARES Act dollars outweighs the benefit from the E-rate out just in terms of how much we're getting from E-rate versus CARES. So, um, yep, it's a, it's a shift in strategy from what we were, we were trying to push this summer. But long-term, it's going to be a net gain for us and so we're gonna do it.
I have a question on the E-rate. Is that, I think it was, was it like $150,000 that we were gonna get?
The, uh, the projected cost right now for the wireless project is in the neighborhood of $120,000, $130,000. And I'm working with the vendor right now to solidify those costs. So our projected E-rate return is gonna be $60,000 because we get 50% back.
So can we forfeit those dollars then? This, can we apply for something else, is my point.
In terms of reimbursement on this project, yes, we forfeit them if you will. But realistically, what it means is if come this winter slash spring, we can look at our situation and be like, hey, we can use those like these kind of resources. They can be used for something else.
Okay.
So we just have to look at our list of needs, decide if there's something out there that we need to do, look at what's covered by category two E-rate funds this, this coming fiscal cycle and see if they're eligible for E-rate reimbursement and apply it.
Okay.
So how is the, because rollout is, is a big deal and that was something that, you know, I, as we had the discussion, became sympathetic to. How are we among all the other things? You know, how is the technology committee or whatever this is going through adjusting to rollout one-to-one?
I, my experience conversations, everybody's been really excited. Maybe a little bit of nervousness, like, well, this is coming up faster than we thought, but that's pretty unexpected. I'll be honest right now, so Brian wants to plan to get these out for $1,500. We don't have that yet. That's something we're still working on, this is pretty fresh. But as far as my job right now is I want to get this on the agenda as soon as possible, just knowing that there's a lot of lead times on ordering. I didn't want this to wait till the end of this month or early next month because it's just pushing it that far down the road. And obviously, we lose a lot of benefit from not pulling them up until March. So there's a lot of continued determined progress we're working on right now. And, you know, general roll-up strategy and how we're getting them out there, honestly, is one of them yet. But we'll have something in place in time for this.
Thank you.
Any further discussion or questions? So the motion was to approve this by Sunny, second by Lynn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion for the Apple lease for student MacBooks is approved. Discussion items, item A, Pilgrim's Tax Abatement Request.
Katie, can you hear me?
You have to push the button.
Is this better? Okay. Thank you so much for being here tonight. My name is Katie Whiteland, and I am from Austin Consulting. I'm here on behalf of my client Pilgrim's Pride. Their, their product Golden Plump here is produced in Cold Spring. And we are exploring options for an expansion of the facility. And if you're not familiar with, with Pilgrim's Pride, they do produce natural raised chicken. They harvest it and process it here for distribution. They have been here in Cold Spring since about 1978 and have gone through a few expansions. But now we're really considering something larger to update their efficiencies, improve their equipment, as well as add about 50,000 square feet on their facility. They're looking to add that to the southernmost portion of their facility, lining up to the highway. So it'll be a nicer appearance there. What they're looking to add is about $75 million in investment to the facility. About $52 million of that is going to be on the actual machinery and equipment. Lots of automation. And the rest will be on the actual expansion. So they are looking to add about 130 new positions. These positions are well-paid jobs. They meet the standard living wage here, as well as really great benefits for the families. They would like to start this project in the fourth quarter here of 2020. And then hiring would begin in January of 2021. So it's a very quick project, and, which is why we're coming to right now. Winter's coming, so we want to get some shovels in the ground here before that happens. The, the benefit that we provide to the school district, to the county, to the city, is going to be extensive as far as bringing additional people in the, in the district here. It's going to be adding construction jobs, purchasing materials locally here. And it's also going to be assisting with some of the families that may have been impacted by the pandemic by offering them employment. So what we're looking at is we're requesting from the school board, from the city of Cold Spring and Stearns County, to provide, we're asking for a 75% tax abatement. And this will be just on the incremental taxes that are going to be generated from the project. So it will not affect, have any effect on the current tax base that is being provided to the school district. In fact, it will add 25% additional to the tax base. So we have received approval from the city council meeting for a public hearing. That's going to be taking place next week. We just did receive affirmative request from the committee at Stearns County to present that to their board. So they're going to be considering the same request as well. And we would like the school board to consider the 75% incremental tax abatement for this project. So I'm asking you to consider that and wondering if, if that would be something that you'd be interested in, in looking at if you bring to.
Okay, so the, the way this is being done, it's different than usual TIF?
It is, yes. Unfortunately, with the project timeline, the TIF just was not going to, going to make it work. With us wanting to get permits, with us wanting to get shovels in the ground, getting the contractors hired, there's just not enough time to work the TIF out. So that's why we're looking at the tax abatement. And that's actually also why Stearns County is actually considering it. They've historically not participated in the tax abatements, just the TIFs. But they did just formally approve the request to go to the board.
Okay, and the abatement lasts for?
So we're requesting a 15-year abatement. Yep.
A lot of times, TIFs are actually longer than that.
Exactly. Most of the times, they're about 20 years. So we're hoping that we'll get all three to participate, and that means it'll be a 15-year.
So we're actually coming out better by having you ask for a 15-year abatement of 20, 75% than we would a TIF that would have gone 20 years for 100%?
Correct, correct. And just some information on the financials there. The current market value of that location is about 9.8 million. And speaking with Stearns County assessor, he has estimated it'll be probably close to 14 million. So that will change the annual property tax from 327,000 to approximately 450,000. So it's going to give that increase, and then the school board, or the school district, I'm sorry, will, will also see that 25% increase.
So this is coming to us for discussion tonight, and the other entities haven't seen it in front of them yet. Is that something that we want to wait on or need to wait on? Is it, are you looking for action tonight, or can we wait till action?
You know, I would totally be fine for having discussion tonight and voting on it next board meeting. I was at the city council meeting last week, and they approved a public hearing. So that'll be taking place on the 22nd, as well as the, I'll be presenting this to the Stearns County Board on the 22nd as well.
For me, I think it'd be nice to make sure that the larger entities are approving this prior to us sort of assuming that it's going to be approved. So I would like to see it come back, but.
Assuming the others approve it, you wouldn't have a problem, okay?
Right.
Well, I think it helps us to see what our tax being based is feeling because that's really one of the answers to. So I would figure, Jason, we want to see what, you know, our city's feeling about it, what our general public's feeling about it. And I think it helps us to make a better decision. If one or two or three or, or, you know, what, what happens if only one entity says, you know, we'd like to report or agree, or how does it?
Yeah. Good question. Historically, Stearns County does not approve tax abatements. It's just not something that they generally partake in. So we were pretty happy to hear that they, their committee did want to go ahead and bring that to the board. If they decide not to approve it, the city council could still approve it and will still move forward with that. When there's, the way that the statute is written, if there are all entities partaking in the tax abatement, then it can be 15, it's limited to 15 years. If there is one that is not partaking, we can elevate it up to 20 years if we want. So right now, we're hopeful that we'll get approval from everyone, and that's why we're looking for that 15-year. So one, two, or three could all participate, and it would not change it.
And then the increase in the property tax. As far as the impact to the district, is that extra dollars that you're paying impact the taxpayers so that it's a set rate? Or would that be an additional funding for our district overall?
So the way that it works is that there's currently, the property taxes being paid to the, to the district. We're going to have that additional, which is, you know, a little over $100,000, $130,000. And so we're asking for 75% of that to be abated. So you're still going to be receiving 25%. And it's only the incremental, so it will not change anything that is currently in place right now, the financial support for the district.
Generally, what happens when an organization like your business like this pays more taxes, it raises your tax base, which means everybody else, if everybody else's value stays the same, their tax rates go down. So it helps the rest of us because, you know, if we need 100% of taxes to pay all the bills, and they're going to pay more, then the rest of us can pay a little bit less. If, meanwhile, if everybody else's rates go up, we still might see increases, but they wouldn't be as great because they're paying a bigger share of the tax.
And we do have a pretty conservative assessment for the estimated assessment. And that'll stay in place for the term of the abatement as well. So you won't see any decreased tax revenue for the term of the abatement.
Any further questions?
Appreciate you, Katie, being here tonight to answer our questions.
Yeah, thank you very much for your consideration and for that.
In the document that's in the packet, number seven, says requesting 75% annual property tax abatement from the city of Cold Spring and Recore Independent School District for a period of 20 years. But you said 15.
You know, and I apologize, I said that to you prior to receiving word from Stearns County.
Okay.
That they, because we had gone under the assumption that they do not participate at all. However, the size and the revenue that this project is going to bring, they decided they, they want to move forward with it. So it will just be 15 years.
But we should expect that if they don't move forward with it, it's going to be 20.
Well, our ask here is 15, and we wouldn't change that if one of the other entities decides not to participate.
All right, so we'll see this on the agenda for next time then.
Perfect, and I will be here to answer any additional questions. And in the meantime, please let me know if you'd like more details on the financials.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item B, start of the year update.
So you see the, the first report is enrollment. And you can see that we, you know, as of last Friday, we're at 2254. There, again, I don't have today's changes, but you can see that, that's where we are. Any questions on the enrollment?
How, so we, so with our last board meeting, we discussed capping enrollment at capacity. And so how has that affected our enrollment numbers?
What has, what has been the most significant, significant impact has been kids going to homeschool. So we currently have just about exactly the same number. When I last presented you, we were like, we were like 2278, which was, what is that, that cap area we were? We have about 24 or 50 students at homeschool. So that, that is about the exact number of why we're down 24 students, under what we said would be our break even.
So are we allowing kids to open enroll then, should make that up?
We still, we still have, we still take enrollment. The, the problem, we said we would take enrollment, and then that they could come in if they, if we were under the cap per grade level. But unfortunately, that's kind of, I'm not sure if people understand that. And I think I have to make that very clear to people that we will still take enrollment. It's whether or not you can get into that grade level. Because we're, right now, we're only open at K1 and 6.
So where are the other 24? So what about the other kids at homeschool? I mean, I'm guessing there's some openings other places? Or are we still counting the homeschool with the idea that they come back, or?
Yeah, we can't do that.
Right, so you, you can't do what?
We can't count them as they're coming back.
Right, so that's my point. So there's, there's got to be some opening some other places if there's 24 kids.
Well, again, you can see, we have room in, we have room in kindergarten, we have room in first grade.
So what are you looking at that we can see that on?
Yeah.
Um, it's that attachment.
Yeah, the, the monthly report of enrollment?
Yeah.
So which number are you comparing to which number?
The, geez. You see where it says September 3rd?
Yeah.
That's, those are the numbers that I'm looking at.
And you're comparing them to the original budget estimate?
Yes.
So kindergarten is down, first grade is down, second grade is down, third grade is down significantly, or more significant than the rest. Fourth grade is up.
Yeah, so remember at the last meeting, we did our resolution? We looked at the cap numbers for capacity to say, yeah. And so those numbers, those cap numbers are not on this sheet.
Okay. So we would not be able to look at this sheet and know which grade levels are still accepting enrollment?
Correct. So I need to make sure that that is part of this report.
If there's a way that that could be done.
Yeah, if there's a way that can be done.
So do we have a sense of what grade levels are open? Do we know for, for sure?
Well, we still believe the three grade levels that we have open are still open. And we're going to, that's on our task tomorrow is to make sure you know that. And then that needs to be communicated.
What's our normal homeschool group number? Is this double or?
Uh, last year we had?
I normally have about 12. Last year when I did homeschool, so it's doubled, more than doubled. And a majority of the reasons are due to COVID. The uncertainty, they want their kids at home.
And they're choosing to homeschool versus do remote learning?
Correct. And they are in charge of their own curriculum. Most of them are participating in the funding they get from MDE to purchase their own textbooks and curriculum.
Yeah, so we should probably get that information out there if their family's still looking to, you know, for something.
Entrance conferences then?
Yeah, entrance conferences. Initial response from families that I talked to and staff were that the entrance conferences were well received. People did not wait in line to get their pictures taken here at the secondary, which again, picture day is always one of those deals. Talked to a couple of staff members, and said they really enjoyed making those connections with their parents and students. And then staff just, it was just a really nice way to ease into the, to the year. So, so far, go ahead.
Sorry, I, I was with several parents over the weekend. And we, we were talking about how the conferences went. And I would say it was a 50/50, some got a presentation and got information about how the students are supposed to be moving in the classroom, that they can go to their lockers before, at the beginning, at the end, that they should wait to use restrooms until they're in the classroom. And the other half got none of that. Like, didn't see a presentation, and didn't, and didn't know any of those answers. So, and I don't, like, I didn't ask who, I mean, they were, it was a combination of high school and middle school. So I just think there could be, there could be parents and students out there that, that at least struggled the first day and probably today, and maybe still aren't really sure if they can go in their locker with their, with any bags or coats or at the beginning of the day. I haven't talked to those parents after today, but I talked to them over the weekend.
Well, I know on the first day, I was out there, standing out there telling students that they could take, go to the locker and drop their coats and stuff off and head to their first hour. So will this be more due diligence on that? And we'll have to be more some due diligence on making sure that we're consistent on our messages when we start the year.
Yeah, and I, I think you're right, that as we go through this whole thing, that, that has to be so imperative to your teachers because us that have kids in different classes, the message about how the COVID process is going to go should be the same. So I think, again, it just, it, there's no fault of anybody, but I think it just has to, you need to read this. This is like the document that you need to cover with your kids that is going to be everybody. And again, it's going to go on probably the rest of the year, that we're going to have these different rules and regulations based on how we're doing things. So I think I would kind of echo that with Sunny, that, you know, again, no fault to anybody, but, you know, teachers are going to have to understand, you need to cover these things right here so that every kid is hearing the same message when it comes to, you know, whether it's lockers or bathrooms or masks or whatever.
Item, did you have anything else on that?
No, no.
Item three was the, the COVID update.
So just as of last Friday, we, or last Thursday night or evening of Friday, we did get a, a further explanation on the decision tree that I am going to send out to our parents tomorrow. So just some, some more information about, okay, what to do, my, my son or my daughter has an exposure or both. So just, just explaining the decision tree and how that process works. Should there be a case either in the classroom or a, or a teacher or a student. So that'll be in my update tomorrow. I think parents would, would like to see that. It is long, and it comes, comes to a lot of scenarios, but it's very informative. Okay, item C, the ALC handbook. On the agenda for tonight is your first review of the ALC handbook. As I said, will become part of our annual handbook approvals as we move forward. Do you have any questions on that? It'll come back. Do you have any questions on it? We'll prove it on the 28th. These processes are in place, the ALC is up and running. It's just that this was, I asked for this to be done so we could have this going forward.
Any other questions?
Is this, pardon my ignorance, is this an ALC handbook? Is there a number of changes thrown, thrown in as compared to previous? Is it net new?
This is, this is brand new. This is the first time this has been presented.
And I, my only, I think it's very well done. It's very detailed, and that's great. My only, and maybe this was intentional and by design, and I'm misunderstanding how this works, but there, it, there, it does leave a lot of room for discretion, which, which in theory is probably actually really good. I just, it's disciplinary discretion, I guess. So if you could be suspended from five to 10 days, that's like a pretty wide disparity of suspension. And how do we determine if a student, one student for the same offense is, or same or similar offense is suspended for five days versus double 10 days? It also talks about, you know, patterns of tardiness. What is, what is, how do we define a pattern of tardiness? Again, so we're fair. Again, so we're fair in the implementation of discipline and staying consistent within our policies. That, that would be my general theme comment, although it's super detailed. There's just a lot of room for discretion and maybe that's okay.
Nate, do you want to talk about that at all?
Yeah, I'm just looking through where the, where the one to five or five to 10 days are. Because even like our high school, middle school handbooks have that same range in there depending on most things. I can't speak to like the vagueness of the, of the tardy and how to prepare it at the home. I can speak about the size of those, what is the number in there? There's obviously a lot of discretion in that one.
Right.
Like, can I get those answers for you?
Yeah, it's just a, it's just an observation. And if what you have been using at the high school level allows for that level of discretion and it's been successful, then there's no reason to make any changes. It's just sort of something I noticed and might pose a challenge for a teacher administrator to have to leave that, leave it up to their discretion, which, I mean, we, I trust all of them, obviously. It's just, it's a hard spot to be in.
Okay. Item eight, report to the board from Brian regarding the one-to-one.
Yeah, Brian's here. It's a letter, it's, it's just general information. You can, you know, you made the big, big move tonight to get the MacBooks here. So if there's any questions for Brian other than that, Brian, do you want to address anything?
No, I, we covered most of, I think, the big topic points about, about appearing in these conversations. And then I just, I wanted a written letter in there as well as, as a written word for you guys to review ahead of time. Just to try to keep our conversation short so we have a lot to communicate. But if you have any other questions, let's certainly answer them now.
I do want to just comment that the technology team did meet on Friday and we have a small group tasked looking at the one-to-one initiative document that will come back through our policy, so.
Yep, so the one-to-one sub meeting we had last year, that was a part of creating that document. Mr. Johnson did send us, for both of us, there's some things that they want reviewed in that. So that group is going to meet again this year to pick up that work and review again and sort of make those adjustments.
Okay, that's it. Okay, and then upcoming events and activities. Of important note, the future school board meetings will be relocated to the DF Commons area starting September 28th. So that will be going forward, I think, through the remainder of the school year for certain.
At least for now, so that this can not be torn down for, because there's, this is quite the setup abandoned here. And we, we don't want to mess with the band setup.
Okay. So that will be going forward. I think that Stearns meets on this Wednesday. Stearns County County Services is on Tuesday. Emergency planning team is?
Wednesday night.
Wednesday night. C is on Friday, but they haven't determined the location.
It is virtual.
It's virtual. I already signed up for it.
I'm signed up for it too, Lynn.
Okay, and then we have another meeting, school board meeting on the 28th. And the, and that, the location is incorrect on the attachment. It will be again in the DF Commons. Okay, anything else? Otherwise, meeting adjourned.